Maybe 6:30. I'm gonna start this meeting of the Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors. Good evening, everybody. Jim will be here soon, but he delegated us to...
Begin?
Begin. And as usual, we will begin with public comment. And you see, we have some members of the public here, and I think that Lanay may want to give some comment. If you can come to the front.
Since there's no way here. Here?
You should sit down right there, or you can stand.
So I'm the president of the parents group at the middle school.
And your name is?
My name is Lanay Timponi. And I basically came to talk about the controversy around fundraising that's kind of floating around town today. As the parents group president, we met for a lot of several months to plan and did our best to find a fundraiser that included local businesses and kind of ticked all the boxes for our community. We, you know, we're all just trying to raise money for our middle schoolers. There aren't a lot of supportive people in the school. Parents group meetings tend to be a lot of people. So I just wanted to come out and say, hey, you know, that we love input from the community and that we're encouraging more parents to be involved. And I've tried to answer all of their questions that came at me last night and this morning so that they could be informed. And that I just will continue to work really hard for the middle schoolers, and I hope that some other parents will join me constructively.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Jim has shown up, so I'm just...
Yes.
But I do want to say thank you for your work on the parents group committee. And I feel like I might just want to add, if I can say this, just that the school board does not react that quickly to things on Facebook. This was on the agenda.
Yes, very. Of course. I know, you were on it.
It was on the agenda. I haven't put it on the agenda a few days ago.
Yes.
And so some school members may not know that...
Yes, we saw it.
That's right. Awesome. Right, that's me. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Anyone else for public comment?
Great, I'm sorry I'm late. Moving to the consent agenda. Can I pull something?
Yeah, can I motion to pause the superintendent's report just to ask?
Yeah, a brief question.
I make a motion to...
Approve the...
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the superintendent 's report.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All of the bidder?
Hi.
Do you please? Great. All yours.
Thank you. We don't need to address this right now, but I just thought, since there was mention of busing in here, and since busing was a big issue last year and a big budget issue, could we get an update on how, like I said, it's really early right now, but in the next month or so, could we get an update on how the busing situation has coalesced and, you know, what's working, what's not working, what the orientation looks like? And I don't know if there's any brief updates now, but...
Yeah, I mean, unless you want to speak now, my sense is that another two or three weeks might be helpful to really...
More helpful than just the first week.
Right now, maybe coalescing is supposed to coalesce.
Yes, yeah. Would you agree with that statement, Jim? So articulately. I can speak to it briefly. I mean, this busing has been a significant change for our community, and with change comes understanding and time and bumps to iron out. Right now, the schedule is set. There are some things that were changed because of two reasons. One, because of the addition of middle school riders, as well as buses being consistently late last year, particularly in the weather. So the bus garage decided to move it forward, move the timing forward a little bit to give them more time to get kids to school. And that's caused some consternation amongst particularly younger kid families, which is understandable. We gave the bus garage a 45-minute time period that we wanted kids on the bus, and they're doing the best they can to abide by that across the area. So we have a large area now that we're working with with the addition of Roxbury to the bumper buses. So that was quite a feat for them to accomplish, and they have. We didn't want kids on the bus that long. Currently, I actually have a meeting that was just set tomorrow because there is a large challenge as to how to pick up and drop off middle schoolers in a city that does not have a school building built or a parking lot built to drop off and pick up middle schoolers safely to the buses, to the community, to the traffic flow, to all of that. And we did debate lots of different ways to do it. We chose on one, and people aren't happy with the way we chose it. So I do have a meeting tomorrow with Pam and Aunt Ryan, Stacy from the bus garage, the police chief, Matt Nysley, Bud Owens, the fire chief, so to take in some safety considerations and see if more minds can think of a different idea than we did. I'm not hopeful in that, but we do have that meeting set for tomorrow.
It may be one of the reasons we never bused middle schoolers before.
It's definitely something that was not anticipated.
The U-32 bus drops off near the middle school, and I think they pick up and drop off near the middle school. I think they stop in the middle of the roundabout and let kids...
We have six buses. So six buses would...
Would fill that roundabout right up.
Yeah, definitely. Why, traffic is several hours.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, you know, we've debated all these different ideas, so we're gonna get more of the leaders in the community around the table tomorrow to see if they can think through other ideas that we haven't thought through.
Six buses?
We have six buses.
Loading and unloading at the same time?
Yeah, ideally, because that's the fastest.
Right.
If we were to move up to Main Street and do it right in front, not only do we have lots of experiences from our own vans, as well as the bus company, that things get clipped very quickly, and accidents happen very quickly because people don't want to wait. The red lights would have to be flashing, so you're stopping traffic on Main Street, which is a very busy road, two A's for the pickup and drop off, and the bus, only two buses can fit at a time there. So it'd be two buses, load them, move them. Move two more in, load them, move them.
I was gonna say, to line it up, you'd have to have new parking for it.
So there is no ideal situation to this problem. So we're gonna talk about it tomorrow and see if we can come to a better solution than what we have now. We can rearrange some of the timing at the elementary school so the buses get there, middle schoolers load right away. You know, there's no wait time, and see what happens.
And did we go with two new buses? I know that's what we budgeted, but we weren't certain.
I would make the statement too that everybody is working incredibly hard to make what is a hard situation the best it could possibly be. I would just want to make sure everybody, the bus garage is working very hard. Stacy Emerson spent her entire day in Montpelier doing our street, our runs on her own in her car today to ensure that she made good decisions and safe decisions for kids. Like, everybody is working incredibly hard on this.
And when you do something new, it does take time to work it out.
Do we know how many middle schoolers are actually riding the buses?
They're pretty full.
Of middle schoolers?
No, of kids, so of our buses. Do I know exactly how many middle schoolers? No, we don't have that data just yet.
But one of the things that we heard during the process of receiving community input was that we were likely to have an increase in elementary school students riding because people who were driving, their elementary and middle school students were doing so because of that disparity in time, and so...
When the middle schooler can ride, so can the elementary student.
Should, if every child on the route took the bus in the morning in particular, each bus would have between 70 and 80 kids on it, which is a max capacity.
That's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
Right. It's max capacity. So that creates the challenge in the after-school world of parents who want their kids dropped off in different after-school locations that if all of those morning riders are also afternoon riders, which we know they're not, right, because of other after-school activities in part two and extracurriculars and all that kind of stuff, then the primary responsibility of the bus garage, what we've hired them to do is get kids home.
Right.
So that's the primary responsibility, which is a change, because before there was room, right? So we're working on collecting the data in the afternoon to find out just how many kids are on the buses and what is room.
Which ones are full now?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Everybody is working incredibly hard on this.
Sure.
So Jim, before we leave this, I'd like to say, on behalf of the board, I don't think the board will mind me saying this, thank you to the staff for the opening of school. You talked about it, and I know you thanked them, but in a lot of cases, it was not quite what they thought about the couple weeks moving up to school, and I'm very appreciative that it went well, and we have such a wonderful professional staff that went well.
They were very close.
Everything got done.
Mostly. Almost. His intro was beat to the best.
Should we approve the superintendent's report? Is that something that actually needs to be approved?
It's on the agenda to approve, so if, so I would approve it.
I would make the motion to approve it by itself, yeah? Second it.
In favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great. Andrew, construction review. Talking about construction?
Yeah. So, do I give an introduction, or do you want to...
At least, at least...
The fabulous director of facilities, Andrew DeRosa.
Yes.
Was that a little softball, or is that...
Yeah.
It's always good to re-say who you are if someone hasn't seen you before.
More along the lines of summaries and future things like that. I got it. So, yes, we are speaking to that last couple weeks of thrash, and there's still gonna be a couple weeks of thrash around here, but absolutely, the custodial staff in particular from my end did an amazing job of working hard and continuing to work hard, and at times seeming like they were shoveling sand against the tide, but they kept with it and were the buildings in the condition that Tom particularly has set for himself. No, but we were able to address the other more immediate needs, and we'll get back up there. To be quite honest, I think you all have seen, as you sit in stoplights with dump trucks and backhoes and all this, there's arguably never been a construction season like this that we've faced. And if we had said back in June, the contractor had said to us, "You're just not gonna get the materials because they're going to every other construction project in America," it wouldn't have shocked me. E.F. Wall did an amazing job on the project, making sure that we have what we need and we have the resources and capital sources engaged. And Fred Fitch, the onsite job supervisor, which we knew when we signed a contract with him, we knew that we were getting credit. We knew we were in as good a place as we were gonna get. And that goes also with the playground project in ECI. They did a really great job of setting up and keeping in it, as we all know, we went by that, didn't seem like anything in progress. It's, I don't know if those small projects that are most difficult, because you can't put anything anywhere, you can't get anywhere. If it was too compact, they could just have kind of swept right through there, but when you cannot put this one, put huge, you can't work that or anything, because you stole the material there, it makes it difficult. And they needed it.
The sod really saved the day.
Absolutely. And we created a lot of ease in laying that tape root. We invested a lot in that sod, and it's gonna take a lot of abuse, so we're gonna push that. Certainly, the playways are gonna take the most abuse, we're gonna push that until we really are confident that that's taking hold. So there's a lot of school places like that where you have to tell everyone it's the places that have plastics and plants, are the last critical ones that would sell.
Don't tell anybody.
We'll wait a couple weeks on that. You know, we did, again, we had a good team between the contractors and the staff. You couldn't ask for anything better than that. And I say that in all honesty. If it hadn't been successful, it wouldn't have been for our activity, the lack of competency. You know, it would have probably not have gotten done. This team didn't get done, no team would have. So that made my job a lot easier. I'm gonna talk about the projects, just to make sure that I've got a sense of where we're at, what we did. I don't think we've done this before. I apologize, my schedule's kind of a little bit messed up here lately, but we will do a few chores of all of this, so you guys can now only see what we've done, but what else the future holds for us. We'll start off with Roxbury. We upgraded that restroom down there. I don't know if they knew we used Roxbury products in this year, but they were not adequate to the school. And now they are. They're going to wear well. They're made of quality materials. They look great. They're, they're gonna last school a long time. They're gonna last school a long time. I was gonna say, I had some storage space down in the town hall that I was lacking. There was no restorant down there, the car, uh, quarter, storage space, doesn't sound like much, but pretty important down there. We also replaced some of the front doors to the town hall. The old ones didn't latch even if you moved them in. They often didn't latch. So now the building's actually secure with that. New, brand-new, custom doors. They were oversized, that you had to go custom, and that's not to say fancy, they just had to be built. But this door, the original door, is still on site. We put them up in the attic in case anybody ever wanted to look at them. That, we have a little bit of a system that's true, things of that nature. Tina's been doing a great job coordinating with, E.F. Wall also was able to work on that project for us. Tina's been doing a great job coordinating.
I would not leave this, Tina.
No. Keep it down to the Roxbury school. We have our condition offices, we have a couple components still around the building, and some things that you might just have to deal with and take care of, but that building's in, for the products that we did, is in good shape. UBS, again, the playground. The playground goes up and down for, some places two weeks, some places manually push it three, four weeks. Some of the hardware, the surfaces, they make the hardware. The playways are in place. You know, it is no different than any other construction project. We encourage people, if you see something, or the teachers, if they see something that state that doesn't look familiar, bless them, and look to it, and, you know, we never walk away from a project, and it's all the way done. But we're in good shape down there. The contractor has a few other items, cleanup items to take care of down there. As part of the cost savings that we took, I think we kept the essence of the design. I don't know how many of you were stopped from the very beginning, but the essence of the design is still there. Unfortunately, in the lower courtyard, the indoor courtyard, we have space to add features as desired. The soil renovation went fabulously. As Grant mentioned, we hoped to take advantage of cost savings, being able to dispose of the urban soils over and burying the soils. They just, they were clay, they were rock, they were clay, and they weren't sufficient or suitable for what that owner wanted to do, so they had to go up to cotton tree, so they unfortunately couldn't take advantage of that cost savings. The interior of UBS, we have new bathrooms, I don't know how many of you have seen, but this is probably our fourth renovation. All of the bathrooms, if UBS has been renovated in the last two to three years, we were able to use the same footprints. We were able to tile the wet walls that were near the same circle. The tetto was backing up onto them, so the cleanability is going to be there. Unfortunately, we have Torazo floors over there, so that's, that helps with cleanability. What is Torazo? Torazo, steel, traction, granite, chips, porcelain, cement, tissue material, and then ground down. The stuff that used to happen everywhere, and now I doubt you can even find something to do it. But it's basically concrete at this point, but as I say, with a couple of granite chips in it.
Oh, yeah.
The elevator, we have a little size elevator, it's in the south. We designed the elevator there, or we ate a lot of the brakes for next summer to take out the old one. We needed to prioritize and take care of that, because we'll just leave that and take care of it later date. Still in our contract, but we'll just wait until, but they have more important things to focus on. The fire alarm system is in place, it's not operating now, it's operating off of the old system, which was always the plan, to always leave your old fire alarm system in place until the other ones test and improve them. We met with the fire alarm chief, and then, because of the background over there, they satisfied with the system that we have in place, and they say it's the one that we have. There was a, they downloaded the brains, and it didn't take, and so they're gonna re-download the brains, but, you know, somebody has to come up from Tennessee, and they'll be here in a couple weeks. Once that system is tested, we'll swap over onto the new system. There's still a lot of work in the catch-up phase, but apparently the contractor are out of the school building. Like I said, there's some work in the basement, and they're working with Chris Luce to make sure that they have the access they need and make sure that we don't interact with the teaching of the children. Main Street building, we built two new bathrooms. That is actually part of the capital fund. We made those as part of the hardware, but we separated that from money, which made financial sense to, you know, the project gets cheaper if you're producing more than you can contract at once. So we did all of this as well. They are very similar, if you have had a chance to look at the new bedrooms out in the lobby. Lots of tile, lots of hardware and surfaces. Those appliances, they're finished up. There's still, I think, a little bit of a mirror here, a fixture there that needs to be tightened or whatever, but fundamentally, the contractors are out of the building over there.
With ceilings?
Yes, we said, I don't remember if you were really good with ceilings in the Main Street building, but we had a good contractor, and we said, "Let's do it."
Throughout the...
What's happening?
Throughout the building?
We did the first, we did the basement last year ourselves, and so this year, we did the wings on the first floor that had drop ceilings, and then we did the third floor and put in new lights and put in new suns, and it makes a world of difference. I mean, it's just...
It's a lot brighter.
It's brighter, and it's not broken and twisted and yellowed, and, you know, it's crisp.
Drop ceiling?
What's that?
Because it's still a drop ceiling?
Yeah.
It is pretty interesting.
Yeah, yeah. It was, I'm sure at least about, exactly about. But that was kind of just at Main Street and Main Street.
Safety doors, too?
Yeah, we created that in the justice deal. We're still, the doors, again, were made over and buried. John Rose, who's a woodworker over there, and...
They matched the rest of Main Street, which looked really nice.
They did. And we've had the keep-off system now, that you can basically go into this lock fast to be able to get buzzed into the, into the building after that. Again, still some, a little bit of wiring to do and all that, but it's, the pieces are in place.
Was there any outdoor work at Main Street?
There was. There was. We took out the shelves in front of the building, and additionally, it's a concentration on the building, so you can't really tell, but we kept it to those couple reasons. We kept it because they were, they weren't all that attractive, they were high in the building. It's not great to have trees right up against your building, traps moisture and things of that nature. So if the tree happened to fall over there, the building would really pop, but it's still an improvement. I believe it's an improvement. We also took out, when we did UBS, we took out a lot of the trees in front of UBS to let that building stand out, go back to its former glory.
Speaking of trees, many trees take a lot of water, so we have a system to keep these trees alive?
We do. There is, as part of our, as part of our business maintenance portion, there's a 90-day maintenance, as well as a new warranty on all plantings that we have as part of the UBS project.
And I think last time you were here, you mentioned new signs for the buildings.
I think that's, I don't know if you look into, the UBS is old and starting to rock. There is a new sign at Main Street building, and we've got that sort of roller...
Flapper thing.
...thing.
Yeah, reading my list favorite thing.
And now...
Talk to the whole, like, yeah, front of the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do better than that. Here at Roxbury, we have a couple of new system systems here on this last summer. The auto toilet has a new air handling system that we're still, need to balance, and, but that's in place. We have a new sound system there, we have a new planning system. All the things that we were able to do was, they sound like buildings, but they're kind of important. So we had a set of house lights that came down, and so we had to get up on 30-foot ladder and get these things around, and God bless whoever did it, because I didn't do it.
It was...
They still didn't do this.
Only with two very small shoulders.
And change the gels and do all that. We have three times each side, FED adjustable lights, that they can now, from the parent on the desk, adjust what they need to do, get them set, and never have to, I shouldn't say never, but you only, the need to get that high is once every, however many years when you want to do something above and beyond what's there, but we should be able to handle everything from the desktop, which is huge, which is huge. Same writing, we have fire curbs coming, soccer curbs are coming, the shades, the windows are coming, they're all...
The chairs?
What's that, yeah?
Pedele chairs are coming.
Yeah, we have curbs, we have chairs, which was remarkable to watch these three or four gentlemen from, who had the, the 65, and they came in, and they were machines, and they came in, and they pulled it all out, and one guy would march ahead and shit it off the mixer, where they were stretched, power, upholster, woolly finish, packed up, shipped back here, and those guys reinstalled them all in about a day and a half.
And they looked pretty.
And they go all over, but it's amazing, I appreciate that all of them were able to do this. So the scenes are in the building. There's a new control room, which I don't really deal with. Everybody, there was thoughts of having sort of rooms in the back and stuff, and we...
We went through many iterations, but that could be...
Actually, we were adding the right solution, because we now have a power control room that allows that six, eight students can be back there. See, it's going on, being part of the production. And it was, was part of the original design, so that's, that worked out really well. The rockers are updated, new showers, again, tile on the wall, tile on the floor, new rockers. We also have a combination of cupboards as well. We have lots of gates that awkward side of that, go for a rocker, and don't want any in the locker, so they can chuck it in. New ref rooms, coaching rooms with showers, new in-house coach offices. And the fitness room is, we were able to buy some equipment from a business that was fitness equipment.
It's called an exercise gym.
Okay. We're looking at, is, we're looking at buying new equipment as part of it, so we're looking at, and we're looking at equipment, and we need to sort of decide, well, we're gonna keep it where we're gonna put it, and where we're gonna store the stuff to roll back, roll back in. We also have, um, weight bench apparatus, and we're looking at, there's racks and pull up bars.
Andrew, you don't follow this.
Andrew, you don't follow this.
So that's kind of like, and that's, uh, we're trying to get other spaces available, people get back to normalcy and that one will, we're in it, we're in it.
Do we know how the gym floor survived having all that equipment set on it?
It's been protected, um, as best we could, I should be protected appropriately. Uh, the, the big, we put on rubber mats, areas that were getting lots of traffic, we put down rocks and paper. Um, you know, I, I trusted Tom Allen's judgment on that of what was appropriate to that floor and, and he made sure that they stayed on top of them. It's a dusty business, it's a dusty business and, uh, there's, there's no way around it, there's no way around it. So, so long before the A is, it was very successful. The, the open construction area over the UBS for a year was a really scary thing. And, uh, the kids and the public, they didn't think they'd stay out there. I mean, I figured if you walked over there every day and see footprints through the snow, people didn't really go over there, which was, which was great, which was weird. So, long before it was successful, we got new things to, uh, to get. We, um, you know, we got a couple of those that are still being made that actually ship, most of them are in transit at this point. Um, and EFWALL knows that the way to make a successful project is to end a successful project. So their friends, you know, these people, they're gonna get stuff done and they, they know the way to, to have a project be successful is to have it and so they're on it.
Andrew, would you mind telling us your role, explaining your role throughout all of this in terms of?
My role is to make sure the people that were doing things had the resources and coordination they needed, um, to make decisions when, when we're promised, to make decisions to prioritize, um, to prioritize what, what was going to happen then, who was gonna get precedence. Um, they have to be in a place to stay out of his way and make sure I can help those students to facilitate it and to make sure if, uh, if something needed to be moved to space, that we coordinated and got into that space.
Were you involved in the design of anything in terms of?
No, I was just a sell by the time, by the time I came on board. So the bond had passed the March of last, last, not last, two, two marches ago, so March of eighteen. I came on, um, in July of eighteen, yeah. And they had that free also, to get the thing we did correctly and we should always try to do is we had a bid in January. That's when people are done with the holidays, they think about coming here and you want to be first on the list, not last on the list. So if you can do it in January, um, that's critical. So we have a lot of time to go backwards, I was, and also they spent Tom Wood and the administration within the building, they spent a lot of time talking about what they needed and I, and it wasn't my job to go in there and raise questions on what they were, obviously I raised questions about the specific things that we were dealing with, but like, oh, we're doing all the fitness there over there, we should put it there, there was no time for that and I trusted that the process was a good one.
There were a lot of contractors at Union who managed all that coming and going.
It was all.
Oh, nice.
It was all the info.
So EFWALL was essentially the onsite engineer for the, everything that was bonded?
Contractor.
An onsite contractor for everything that was bonded?
Yes, ECI was the playground. So our, our text for the building projects and S E group out of Burlington was the playground.
So EFWALL was the lead at Union on the inside, but it would have been S E group on the outside?
Correct. ECI accounts.
ECI.
And so we have that available and we, we sort of, we give our budgets and the projects that we have every year that we want to do. And EFWALL available to us will say, hey, we're gonna have to get a price. And we were able to oversee that, so we were actually able to sort of get that work contracted for, not for free, but the coordination was for free on us because they were here doing it.
Well, as you said, in a small space with all those contractors coming and going.
And that.
It's hard.
That made for a school, there were painters getting on the shoulders of the person, you know, holding up the.
It did make me crazy, but would you always say it didn't?
I said it did.
The Tom Allen's knowledge of the buildings and how they go together and what it takes to get them together as well as Glenn Goodall and, uh, and Chris Luce, um, they, they, they knew how to, you know, they're not simply two city calls away from being in big trouble.
This is impressive.
Um, but EFWALL, they, they, they weren't, they kept us in track. But also they weren't willing to lead us down, so we, we can't do it. You know, they just said, three, four weeks out, we're just not, you know, it's just not gonna fall in place. But, um, and it's not, you know, you hear it, you know, questions, I have to give a question, what, what, what? And you can't introduce that in construction because you get that, the contractors and the staff are totally screwed with it. So you gotta tell them all, we're building it and you gotta be here. And just chatting here, you know, why aren't people working weekends, three weeks, you know, two weeks into the project? Well, people have eyes and these guys were working, you know, long days and if you start asking people to work overtime too early, anyone on these jobs sites could say to their boss, I'm going to get a job getting paid more somewhere else and they'd have free offers that afternoon because it's just construction. So you, you have to manage people and, and manage, manage their time and you need to kind of wait for that. Kids at the end of the marathon, huh? Pretty good. And that happens to me today because.
I did get these rumors about you being there rolling up your sleeves and doing it, so we appreciate it.
It's a team effort, it's a team effort.
Yeah, we must definitely need to give you a big thank, you won't take it, but you deserve a very good thank you as well.
They, everybody else made it really easy, everybody else made it really easy.
Yeah, no, it was impressive to see it come together. It was, it was definitely, definitely kicks butt.
You can hear PR. They, you know, they're basically supporting the school, they're trying to make sure everybody's safe and they never would have left in those buildings if they didn't think they were safe. But they were, they were listening to Bob on Thursday night at eight o'clock and it was Bob who said, I think it's that one that's making one, that's that one, sure enough. We got very fortunate on, on, on one of those occasions. So Bob has been, uh, have been great and, uh, he's involved throughout the whole project from the very first time he said, we're cool. We're thinking about walking, we're sending people that way, what do you think, is that gonna work for you? And they came over and looked at stuff and said, yeah, that'll work, or, okay, so that, right, great, so. They've, they've taken a pretty active role in the buildings and, and, uh, it's great, they know, they know their business better than, better than I do. So, um, you know, you look at it like this, there's, we don't know that, but you probably have to do exterior work in this building. That's a, that's a lot, that's a lot to figure out what gets assigned, what doesn't get assigned, is everything working the way it's supposed to and, you know, so.
Andrew, do you have?
We had two bullet points on here that, for this conversation. Can we add? No. You're talking about what we have, we got a little while.
Yeah, I think I.
We got, uh, what, what do we need to do next?
Well, what we have to do is, um, and I wish Tom was here, um, but we need to continue to work with the staff, um, we need to be pushing. Don't have to get too deep into it, but we got, on this, on this, uh, district, what a faculty, there's a work. It's not a work order, um, but, but it kind of is. And what we're asking, what we're asking the faculty to do is if you see something, let us know about it because these guys are running around doing what they gotta do every day and we don't have time, you know? We want a little piece of something that's torn off the wall or whatever, gotta get to that, gotta get to the next, you know, it's, and you haven't gotten it. So if you want to work with the faculty and staff to say, if you see something, just send us a note. You know, if it's obviously something you need done immediately, grab whoever you need to. But I think the buildings are gonna help a lot because of that extra set of eyes, and there's really lots of them. I think you're gonna go a long way to helping the quality of schools. I mean, the other thing I just want to say is, you know, I've been involved with my son at these schools for eight years now, nine years, and they're doing a little better and I think that's a testament to the school board and making sure that that's a priority. And I think they, they really, you know, they're about to, they're about to cross, we're really gonna start to make really improvements. Um, the, the foundation is there for sure, you know, we've got some of that heavy lifting out of the way. So we're really gonna be able to see results, um, since the infrastructure is in here. But, but we want to do a job of learning with the teachers, just like in the states at the door of time of the year, saying to them, it's not gonna be a good June, and nobody's gonna wanna do it, but part of what we need is be to do is that when the teachers come back and the custodian staff is trying to get things back together and this was a really bad year, that maybe we can ask for that work done earlier season, earlier in the season. And that, that's a lot to ask of the faculty at the end of the year, last thing in the world they're doing is thinking about the start of the next school year. But I think they can do a few jump on things. Not really, um, has been, and hopefully next year was, our custodian staff, we need to give them a little bit of a break. They're working all summer long and this was, this was a really bad year, lack of help here as well. But ideally, I'd, I'd like to be able to give these guys a break. So in August, they can take a couple of weeks, so they can back to school, recharge the kids and the, and the faculty and the staff. I think we do it, but it needs taking some of the burden off of them.
Maybe, maybe scheduling times for like a classroom walk through throughout the year?
Well, we, uh, we traditionally ask the fa, them to do things like do ceilings, paint, um, take on those projects and, and it's not the best use of their time. And again, I think that they can spend, and it's not criticism by any means, it's probably because it's something different that they get to do. But if we can take this off of their plates, let them focus on some of the, some other products as well as say, go take the beat off in August. I mean, we're hard out here. They, they, they're starting this season to be the most, after having their most hectic time.
We'll also be talking about a budget time potentially, um, adding some custodian weekend staff because our custodians, there are some members of our custodian staff who work overtime because of the use of this building. And they work overtime, that's a lot. It's just not, I mean, last week one of our custodians came here, I saw him when I walked into the building on Wednesday at seven AM and I saw him when I left the building after the board meeting at like nine and he got home for dinner. That's what he had done, so some of our custodians are working massive amounts of overtime and it's just not fair to them.
Yeah. And they're not gonna take care of. So the process we're, we're, we need to, as I was talking about, we need, is with the financial cycles of this, so we have to, can't start things until July one, and again, we talked about being prepared early. We need to sort of make this, this, some projects, this two-stage thing, we need to plan, get a bid, buy them, build them such that July one, they can hit the ground running, doing the work. Um, and that's, that's a tough thing to do because we have X amount of dollars and we're able to make that work, we say, here's X amount plus half next year. It's a little tough, but we'll, we'll do the best we can.
Well, Andrew is a great child, um, putting everything together, so, yeah, he's out of the community too. They support his projects, it was, that was a small change and it's great to see him come to fruition.
And I will say here is, um, that what we should continue to do is hire the right people to do the right jobs, you know? If, if we need to do the project, we get an engineer, we need a testing company, we get a testing company. We don't, you know, saving nickels and, or save, whatever the expression is, you know? Saving nickels to spend dimes kind of thing, we should, we should.
Thanks, Andrew.
So this next, what was it, social workers side letter?
So in your packet, I just signed that, I actually, I gave you a new version of it because it had some, your packet, some of the wrong language in it for lack of purposes. The social letters, the social letters and teachers have come, came to me, um, with a similar side letter that nurses had before we negotiated last year, um, because they have additional requirements in order to keep their license that are very similar to the, um, the teacher, gosh, I'm delighted. It's very similar, um, as the, the nurses, the side letter, the last word, side letter, um, to which I am in agreement with them and the union is in agreement with them, so that is presented to the board to see if you are in agreement as well for social workers.
Sounds fair.
Yeah.
Have any ramifications?
Other than, I mean, they would get a pay increase.
Let me, would you mind telling people why you're in support of it?
Um, I think that they make a good argument in that the additional expectations for teachers to qualify for that extra differential, um, they have to do very similar work to that, um, and just because there was, there's an extra work in that application shouldn't mean that they don't get a differential. They have to have it, um, in order to be in the stature that our social workers are. They don't have to have it to be a social worker, it's under license requirement, but they have to have it to be what they're doing now.
That's what I was gonna say, national board certification is a choice.
Yes, it's a choice, yes, right. Second licensure is a choice for them.
And you believe it's representative of comparable class?
Yep. So if you're in agreement?
A favor for approving the side, or a motion to approve the side letter?
A move that we approve the side letter agreement for the social workers.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye.
I have a muscle, any opposed? And our final pitch is, um, fundraising discussion that's been, uh, relatively active in the either, uh, Virginia, maybe.
Sure, I can talk a little bit.
I do as well.
So, uh, I asked, um, I asked Jim and Libby to put fundraising on the agenda a couple of weeks ago and it was in part a reaction to the high school sports team selling, um, discount cards and questions that I had about whether that, um, a few questions, one, one was, um, actually, what are we fundraising for and kind of questions around the finances? What are the needs, is there a reason why the needs aren't in the budget? Is there a decision being made about why we're fundraising for certain things and not for other things? Um, so I would love to hear some more information about that. Um, and then also just questions about whether this is, this is the kind of fundraiser, um, that, that the district wants to be endorsing, um, for a variety of reasons, um, including potentially environmental reasons, environmental concerns and supporting local businesses and what we're having our students do. Um, and I say all of this with the absolute, um, understanding that the parents groups, um, and the people that are working on these things are working really, really hard and trying to have resources for our students. And, um, I've been one of the four or five people at a middle school parents group, I know, it seems like there's this dip in parent group activity when you hit the middle. I know, it seems like there's this dip in parent group activity when you hit the middle school, and that's a real struggle. Um, but I realize that we don't have any policy in the district around fundraising, and I think that might be something that's worth considering, so I thought it would be good to have a discussion, and then, um, if the board wants to develop a policy, we could go in that direction, and then people wouldn't be guessing about makes sense or doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
But, you know, the board might not feel that way, but I thought it was worth raising.
Well, we did start this conversation at one of the earlier meetings this summer, talking about the Montreal trip and the Boston trip, and kids fundraising for those trips, and kids not really understanding why they're fundraising for those trips versus fundraising for parents group versus miscellaneous fun, you know, other fundraising. And maybe it would be worth looking at having the board create a budget for field trips that includes, you know, a certain number of big field trips that we know are happening to make sure that everybody gets to go, and, um...
Nobody has to go door to door to go.
And then, and then be clear about what's additional.
All right, how does additional things are handled too?
I mean, we don't wanna be approving every field trip either, though. When I first came on the board, we did have to approve of our, you know, field trips under certain circumstances, and it was really unclear as to the basis for that, or oh, we chose that there.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say too, is that for certain activities that, yeah, kind of, or next, activities in particular where there kind of should be a, an ability of students to participate, and the, and the extra thing becomes, either there's a lot of pressure directly or indirectly to participate in some of the fundraising for, you know, the extra activities where that pressure should not exist.
I don't always do this, I have to say, but since, since I have an interesting issue, I think I read most of the discussion on one of the social media pieces around this particular fundraiser that started yesterday, and a lot of people were raising questions about the cost of the Montreal trip and the cost of the Boston trip at the middle school, and how do those get paid for if families can't afford them? And I actually, even though my kids get on those trips, I'm not entirely sure that I understand the mechanisms that are in place to make sure that, that they're...
I was gonna ask, you asked at the beginning, I'd like a sort of a recap of who determines what the money for boosters goes to at the high school, or who determines if they raise money at the middle school, what happens to that? Do we have any sort of a, could we have an explanation of that?
So you're asking about two different things.
Okay.
One, right, so parents groups at the middle school typically, and correct me, I'm wrong, will, teachers will make a request for money from parents groups at the middle school or elementary school or here at the high school, um, for things outside the box, so it could be authors visits, um, I was just in the office yesterday at U S, and they were talking about a musician, um, and asking the parents group to pay for a rotating, or musician educator to come in, um, so, you know, that kind of piece. The, the sports fundraising, I asked Matt Link about this today because I assumed Tina wants to, you would ask this question. I think the little Andrew, she was gonna ask this question. Um, the sports fundraisers are for the additional things, so the volleyball last year aside, because volleyball was, was the most sport last year that was not budgeted for, so those girls did fundraising that was not typical, so put that aside from your thinking. Um, but like when the soccer team, for instance, does fundraising, the school budget pays for their uniforms and transportation and that kind of thing, but if the whole team wants a rain, mom, outfit that has, you know, killers, like, that's something that the kids are gonna keep that has their name on it, you know, it's something additional to what we provide the team, then the fundraiser is for that, right? They're going to keep that, it's not gonna stay in the coffers of...
The school.
Mount Killar High School, the kids are gonna keep that. Um, sometimes with boosters, if they pay for something that's additional, like let's say they want our fall sports teams to have rain gear, um...
Without their names on it.
Without their names on it, just as well for their high school soccer, then the boosters pay for it, then that does become the high school's possession, and kids use them every year, um, is my understanding of the process. So it's a different, it's a different piece of the puzzle for why different people fund raise.
So those are two, but then if a sixth grade class wants to go to Montreal, the sixth grade class raises money, is that not correct? The PTA does not give it to them?
Well, often what happens is the kids in the class will fundraise, so let's say the sixth grade class wants to go, and it costs five thousand dollars.
Right.
Maybe the kids go door to door, they manage to come up with five hundred dollars, then they put in an application to the parents group, and they say, can we have another five hundred dollars? And the parents group gives them that.
And then...
And then what happens if a parent, if a family can't afford whatever remaining bills, which the Montreal, I think was six hundred dollars?
And, and that's where the board's conversation around equity fits in.
Right.
That's where it is, because what we don't want to create is a charity situation, which is what we have now.
Right.
Basically, if the family can't afford it, then they ask for financial assistance, and it's up to the family to ask that, and that puts vulnerable families in a hard spot. So, um, so that's what connects to our equity discussion that we had.
In June?
Yeah. Last year around, does the board, when we think of budgeting this year, wanna make a blanket field trip, travel fund, and say, we will fund these trips? The question will become, which trips are you going to fund, and which ones aren't you going to fund?
Yeah, I'm curious, how does this all fit in with our curriculum planning? So if at the beginning of the school year, all the classes decide they wanna do these trips and they fundraise for it, do they just have them? Or do we, as the administration, do they choose, these are the primary trips that will benefit our students the most in these ages, with these experiences, and these are the ones the district supports, and?
Um, I think you get different answers if you ask different panel. So I think teachers would say their curriculum focus, we've never had a curriculum formalized, so they get hard sell for me to answer that way. I would answer it, it's tradition, it, they go to Montreal, they go to Boston, they go to, and we're not unique in that, but I'd say it's, it's tradition, it's where you go.
Now, you might say, 'cause I remember the beginning, uh, they went to Montreal because we studied Canada.
Because they, we said...
Do they do that now?
I don't think so.
It's a foreign language trip.
It's the foreign language.
They go there for...
I'm just hoping I went a few years ago, but we went to Montreal because social studies was candidate for sixth grade.
Now, as you well know, I come from a curriculum background, and there's no standard that's labeled Canada.
I absolutely agree on that, it's probably where that discussion came from.
So from an equity perspective, though, providing the same exact, um, level of support to, um, the economically advantaged and the economically disadvantaged, um, without a equitable, super equitable revenue source, I don't know if it really accomplishes our goal of equitability. But I am very, you know, sensitive to the whole concept of, you know, the, the stigmatizing the process.
Making it cherry.
Exactly.
Andrew, he said if you give money to people who don't need it, that's not the same as equity.
Yes. If you, if you provide the same compensation to someone who has an income of, household income of three hundred thousand dollars versus a household of thirty thousand dollars, I don't see how that improves the equitability of the situation.
That's all of education. Right, but my, my, so this is, this is public education, and we do not care what your income is when we give you a, an English text or a social studies text, we give it to you to use.
Because it's part of the public school that we have to...
And I would say, to, to Libby's, I would say, I would certainly like the discussion of, okay, I think we should have X number of field trips during, from K to twelve during the course of the year, and you can decide.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, I, you know, we might say, you know, this is pretty, it's not gonna be curricular decision, right, and that's what I would say, it needs to relate to the curriculum, which we might not have, so, you know, that would be my theory, is that it goes with the book, so it's public education.
Right, and we think it's important for kids to have the experience of, look, we have Boston, it's a great historic resource, not that far away. We, I know we don't, I've heard we don't...
It's not the curriculum.
No, but it's, it's, we know history.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of, of a trip.
I know we, I've heard that we don't take kids to the ocean anymore, I think that's a shame, I think we should take them to the ocean, um, which could be part of a science...
I have not heard that one, so...
Science related. We used to take third graders to the ocean.
Yeah, I think they go to the gorge now.
Who does, right now, who does approve a field trip? They come to...
Principals.
Principals too.
I don't get it. I don't get it.
So it's the principals in each building would decide on who goes where?
And it is, is, to be honest, I can speak from when I took kids to Montreal, and not only was it taking the children out of the country and out of this city, neither of which some of them had been, but the parents that attended with us, some of them had never been out of the city nor out of the country. How about the education?
I feel like there's at least three different threads in this conversation, right? So one is if there's gonna be fundraising, it's endorsed by the district, what kind of fundraising would, would...
I think a policy statement from the board would be helpful, particularly in this building.
And then there's the topic of if we're gonna have field trips, are they gonna be curricular, and subject to some kind of a, um, approval that they are connected to the curriculum or not? And then there's the question of if we're gonna have field trips, are they gonna be funded? Are we gonna buy the district through the budget without...
In more time.
...for fundraising. So I just wanted to say that I'm hearing all three, right on, and they're, they're actually three different topics, all important.
And there's also, I mean, there's also field trip to echo in Burlington, let's say, which is a bus cost.
Right.
And then there's a field trip, overnight. It's a very different thing.
Yeah, if you took a grade of, you know, sixty, six hundred dollars a head to Montreal, most of a grade, it's like forty to fifty thousand dollars.
Is that the only time, is that the only time that happens K to twelve that a whole class goes away overnight?
Mm-hmm.
I think it is.
That's a overnight trip.
How they stay overnight in Montreal?
I mean, do we, you know, thread the needle on the charity in a different way where we give subsidies to certain families regardless of whether they ask, for instance, you know, kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch?
That would be an easy way, but I don't know how, I don't...
Some sort of expenses where...
I don't know if people just above that limit are, have any easier time, but I don't know how, I don't know what it feels like to be close to that limit.
I don't know what the answer is to this, I'm not suggesting that I do right now, I think it's, we, we need a bit more information, um, but just to say that public edu-, because it's public education, well, that is equity, you have this pool of resources, we know that public education isn't always equitable, and we're striving to create a more equitable system. So, that's kind of the lens that I'm raising this with.
Yeah, I agree, um, I think that's, that's a tough question to ask, and, um, yeah, the other question is if we, if we take out the full cost of all the things, or most of the things that are fundraised for, um, are we willing to do that?
Well, perhaps everything should be done. Perhaps all of the things that they run, they're fundraised for are not things that need to be done through the public schools.
Well, there's, 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 like, really great experiences that are, are still very valuable, but not necessarily, um, you know, in the food, water, shelter category.
I think, I think it gets taught, the, the parents group, I know, don't fund the same thing, I'm speaking just from my experience as a building administrator and teacher for many years, not necessarily as a superintendent right now, because again, I don't approve these requests in my position, but, um, a parents group may pay for different things each year, right, because opportunities arise, um, and they're not necessarily set, and I also worry about getting kids out of a building, particularly those from lower socioeconomic status families, and kids who come speaking a different language than English, and, and right, getting them out of the building, the language development that things like a field trip does for kids is tremendous, um, and experiences are tremendous, so, um, it's a conundrum, and I don't, I don't, I don't get really well in the position, but I don't wanna limit those opportunities for teachers to think about it.
It's good to hear from you that you think there's great value in it.
Oh, yeah, so do I think everyone's thinking about a field trip. No, they don't want to lead a field trip, but I think the, I think having, having something where a first grade teacher can say, hey, there's this show at the Flynn that's connected to the reunion I just did, and the relay I just did, and they're doing Matilda on stage, I wanna take my kids to it, like, they don't know that's gonna happen a year in advance, right, so...
Well, that is, that is, that brings, that brings, to your point, if a trip to Boston or a trip to Montreal, you know, the families are connected, you know, they're going to Boston, Montreal, it's pretty much experiences, three family trips, and, you know, if it's a, that's not really necessary curriculum, or we don't need that, you know, those are valuable educational experiences that can, you know, connect dots in the classroom, that can open eyes, that can broaden horizons.
Increase independence.
Increase independence, and a lot of the students, you know, for some students, that's, that's their opportunity to go see Montreal, go see Boston, and have, um, you know, have their eyes open to, you know, that experience.
The difficulty I have, and probably back to what Andrew had to say, but what you just said too, is, um, making the determination about whether I can afford the trip or not is probably not equitable. And maybe you could say something like free and reduced lunch, but suppose I'm just above free and reduced lunch, and actually I can afford in my budget to pay that amount of money to go to Montreal.
My car just broke or something happened.
And by the way, I'm not gonna ask you, nor am I going to tell you, because I've always been able to pay for myself.
I'm gonna add on to it, Tina, too, and now I take off my administrative hat, my, my personal sixth grader class is going to a camp, like a summer camp, but they do school things, right? It's not a choice, it's not a choice for us as parents, and so we're getting a two hundred and sixty-three dollar bill for that. Now, my choices were, I will work to fundraise and try to decrease my cost, I will ask for financial aid, or I will pay the full bill. You all keep me very busy as a superintendent, you all keep me very busy as a superintendent, so my box is checked with two hundred and sixty-three dollars crumbling, which I can afford, and I'm honest, I don't have that experience, but at the same time, I was like, this is not a choice for me, right? So there's lots of different ways to look at it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Could I also add just one thing from a completely different perspective? Isn't it also good experience for kids to do the fundraising, to learn, to be independent, to learn kind of the value of a dollar, and to have that kind of ownership, like, I paid for this, I helped create this trip? And I do agree with, you know, maybe there needs to be a policy about what that looks like, but I think it is a valuable experience for them.
That's something Matt Link spoke about today, like, if the soccer team wants to get their name on a something, right, that they have to go out and they have to ask for it, they have to learn how to speak to strangers, and, like, we have responsibility to, so, you know, there's a license.
Yeah, I'll just go into that.
As the justice advocate, I'd say, however, if you were the parent, if I'm selling chocolate bars, and you're the parent that can take three boxes to the office with you and sell them in one day, and I, by the way, don't work at a business that I could take any of those boxes and sell them at, the children gain different things from that. That's, I'm just telling you what does happen.
And I would, the other point I would add about the time that fundraising might take from the staff, I mean, the staff and in the school day, that if you think about the return on investment, we have teachers and faculty that are well-trained and that we're paying very, as, we're paying to teach, and if they're taking time out of their day to do, to work on anything that's coordinating around the fundraising, like Matt is, you know, for athletics, it may be that it really makes no financial sense, and it, you know, a profession, an organization that was a nonprofit that's doing fundraising to stay afloat would always be counting any staff time, and the cost of that staff time to figure out, you know, to the extent that a fundraising effort makes any sense financially, they'd be counting how much they're paying their staff to work on it, and I don't think that we do that, and I realize that a lot of the work is done by parents, but I do get the sense that teachers can get drawn into it, or, you know, Matt seems to be drawn into this, coaches, soccer coaches seem to be drawn into it, I'm not sure that the district ever sits back and looked at. My recollection from the fifth grade Boston trip was that the teachers spent a lot of time on fundraising activity, and also enough that I was starting to be like, I'm... And also enough that I was starting to be like, this doesn't make any financial sense to me at all that the teachers are, are doing that.
Also sometimes classroom time. I'm checking off who's giving me what, when, at the beginning of the day.
Right, so I think that's definitely a consideration that the district should be keeping in mind.
I would support Jerry's comment though, that, I mean, I saw a lot of hoagies going up. An Italian sub and in Pennsylvania. I sold thousands of hoagies in my youth. And I think it was really, really helpful. I'm a really, really shy person. And it was really helpful for me to have that experience of asking people for, to buy hoagies.
And the baseball team went at Shaws all weekend and that's crazy. They were selling, selling to go on their spring break trip.
Right, and I think that's where the district can, you know, as I was saying to Jim at a meeting we had, the district can use the help and support and guidance of the school board. And because that trip in particular, right, there's been lots of requests to do fundraisers on campus. And, and, and we've done a lot so far this year to do outside.
Like big sales.
Other organizations to come do fundraisers on our campus here. And I was able to say, because I knew you all wanted to talk about it, we're putting a hold on, on any additional fundraisers because the board.
What are you talking about?
So the baseball team wanted to do a flamingo fundraiser thing and put flamingos all over the lawn one morning and have the baseball team talk to it, you know, so it's kind of an outside thing. We're not sending them on that trip. They've decided to go on that trip, right?
They're our sports team. It's not a, it's not the league. It's.
It's not, the school did not decide on going on that trip. The parents of the baseball players decided to go on that trip. So, and then we had, you know, some other, you know, good organizations, cancer organizations and.
Policy about outside groups.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I missed that one.
Yeah, that's in our policy.
Oh, then I missed it. I looked for it and I missed it.
You have to point that out to me. I would look for it. Hopefully, hopefully they did do the district policy, but that issue has come up in the past. There's definitely a concern about not having outside groups.
That is good to know because I missed that.
So I have a few issues. There seems to be some parameters around when fundraising is appropriate and not appropriate. And then if it is appropriate, what to do about, you know, how it's used and situations around equity, you know, particularly for field trips.
Maybe there's a money issue. I mean, a bigger field trip falls into the category different than if I want to go to the Flynn. The program. It's a different price tag than if I want to go to Montreal for three days.
What is an appropriate time for a fundraiser and when is not?
And is the district going to take up any level of that in the budget?
Exactly, and that gets to the equity issue.
Could we put a limit, like there's no field trip that any family is going to have to pay more than fifty dollars for, kind of a thing? But I think we would have to understand what the.
Because, as soon as you say everybody gets his field trip for fifty dollars, everybody's going to take that field trip for fifty dollars.
Yeah. Could we support that in the budget? We would need to know what the price tag is. You think that's fifty thousand? I mean, it's five hundred dollars per family.
I think it's more than that.
Class of eighty students?
Well, that's including the fundraising, but if it was six hundred times ninety kids, fifty-four thousand dollars.
Aren't there high school trips that cost like fifteen hundred dollars?
No, the only high school trip is to Ireland and it costs a jillion dollars, but that is very voluntary and very small. It's like ten kids, ten kids every two years.
So I want to clarify, when I was talking about, when I took kids to Montreal, we took them for the day and brought them home. That was a different key.
This is three days. Too nice.
Processed by more people.
They go Quebec City and Montreal.
It's your discretion, but I didn't know if you wanted to allow any more comment.
I was giving thought to that. What is the board? I'm happy to open it up.
Sure.
Okay. Let me get thoughts and then we should probably make some decisions about, I think, I think we're heading towards giving the policy committee. A task, but a lot of people, well, a lot of people want to talk.
Well, assuming you want to talk on this issue.
So I have four that I've seen.
Maybe five or something.
Five.
Sorry, I don't know your name.
One A.
One A. I should have known that. So it's next. Try to give two minutes each. Minutes to two minutes.
Being concise. You can do this, Joe.
Please introduce yourself for the.
My name is Adrian Yelich and hopefully I will help solve some of your conversations that you had tonight. I'm the president of the popular Roxbury Public Schools Partners in Education, MRPS Pi, which is a newly formed parents group that is an umbrella organization that oversees all four parents groups. So Roxbury, U S, Queen's Cathedral School, High School. We were one of our five one C three this winter. And so we have been working very, very hard to build operations, our financial policy, our board over the past six months. And looking forward, really the vision of this organization has been decades of exactly what you're talking about here today. Is to help resolve some of these pain points. And so we want to create order. We want to create a system. We want to create transparency around all the fundraising that happens in our school district. And in order to do that, really the first step that the board is going to be working on over the next couple of months is taking a inventory of what are our fundraisers? Who is fundraising? How much are they asking? Why are they asking? And when are they asking for this money? I'm hoping to reveal some things, if we can pull some historical data and get a real number to share with the board about what is the actual number that we're talking about here? Because we can't just keep throwing darts at the wall. We have to have actual data before we make some of our decisions. And so we are in the process, we've started that spreadsheet. We have some of the data, but it's not done yet. We still have to do a lot of digging because as you've said, fundraising is pop up as a broker. And it would be really nice to be proactive in our fundraising and, you know, there might be outliers here and there, but really to limit that and plan for the year ahead if we can. With all of the fundraisers, our goal is to, as I said, produce that and then really create the financial policies that we have transparency, we have our own policies around fundraising. We're coordinating and communicating around all of the schools. One thing that just bothered me was our customers. So say for National Life, our parents, they're our customers. They're getting bombarded with fundraisers. There has to be a more streamlined, effective way so that our customers are not getting confused about why do you keep asking for money? And so this is going to take time. We're really an infancy building organization. As you know, that's a pretty big, a tall order in, you know, making that happen. But I feel that the board that we have is, is great. Everyone's energized. There's representation from all the schools. And if you give us time to come back in the winter and share our updated information with you and have some good numbers and maybe some structure, I think that will help in form of fundraising policy that you will feel really good about based on some data that we can produce for you.
Based on data.
Policy committee without having information.
Data's great.
I'm guessing you'd be happy to work with the policy committee on.
Oh, whatever it takes. I mean, this is exciting. I think we have a huge opportunity. We have great people at the table and I think we can get this done.
Since you've begun this, what is your timeline? I mean.
So we, as I said, we received our designation of five one C three in the winter. And since then, we have been really trying to restructure our financial policies. So every, every school has their own bank. And so we merge all the schools under one bank account so that we can see all the accounting. We're trying to build structure for receipts because once you're five one C three, there's fiscal responsibility that you have to maintain. And so that's just taken a long time to kind of move the Titanic around all four parents groups to come under one umbrella. And, you know, I think we're still in the infant phase of communication and awareness. I mean, there's a lot of behind the scenes work that's been done. I don't think people are really aware of what we're doing because we weren't ready to come. We're trying to be very strategic and thoughtful of how we build this and do it, right? And so that's what we focus on. We're focusing on the board. We have a board policy. We have bylaws. And so that just takes time to build and that's pretty much all we've been doing for the past six months.
And will you add this another six months before you'd like to talk to us again or what's the?
So actually, we have started the data. We have a pretty good outline. I mean, it's not closing or sharing them outside of our board. But I asked the board to start thinking about how we're going to collect more of this information in our parents groups. Maybe we can assign people to help us. It's going to take a huge team effort to collect this data. And so I said at the end of October, I did get a little bit of pushback, but I'm thinking probably realistically January, February, just because people are busy in life, so.
Adrian, just to clarify, for the community at large, this is now essentially a tax deductible donation, sort of a foundation that's not associated with the school?
It is associated with the school. So if you, we built a website and the website is MRPSPi.org. And attached there is all the four parents groups websites. You can make a tax, what is it?
Tax deductible.
Tax deductible donation to any four schools and Pi also isn't.
Finances are separate from the school. That was a challenge in the past because you. The thing of the parents group funds with the school budget funds has been tricky. So to have it standalone is. Contribute to, to support the schools.
That's a hundred percent. I mean, we, all of us are volunteers. We're not paying the taxes or we don't have the overhead. So all the donations are a hundred percent go right back to the schools and it's a tax deductible donation.
Great. It goes back to the schools as a donation from the organization?
That's part of our financial policy that we are. I can't tell exactly with clarity exactly how it's going to work, but each school is still able to fundraise. They have their autonomy to fundraise. They just have to follow the rules and regulations of our five one C three and the policies that we create. They can keep their money. We're just the oversight organization, really fiscal, labor, insurance, which was really a huge deal for the parents group. So we have top insurance that covers all parents group events. And we're here to really coordinate and streamline the efforts of all the four parents groups eventually. We're not there yet.
Could you repeat the actual name again?
Sure. Well, it's officially MRPS Partners in Education. Or we say MRPS Pi. So we want that to become a household name.
We're making the Pi a little.
I'm a parent of a seventh grader and a sixth grader and a fourth student. And it was an incredibly meaningful and valuable experience that we don't have, that sixth grade does not have any form of, of sort of class trip. And so I would ask, let's sort of start with the fundraising piece, I think, because the type of fundraising that was done or was, and the way in which our students were brought into it is what's causing the sort of current flare up. But the real discussion is what do we value as a community in terms of experiential learning? And what are we willing to say is part of the curriculum and how we're going to pay for it? That to me is the bigger question, so I'd ask you not to lose that focus. When you think of the three things you were talking about, flip that around and start with the, what do we want to get out of this for our children? And then what portion of it are we okay with as the community paying? That is the conversation I think is, is kind of slipped to the side. I don't want to make sure that that stays up front. We did fundraising back then too. We sold candy bars. I remember selling candy bars. But the, we, the trip was there and it was accessible to everybody and I think that that is something that was lost. I also have a unique perspective that my sister runs the Montreal trip. And I think she, I can, she will hardly, she, her pals run the Montreal trip. She's one of the teachers.
She's fabulous.
I don't disagree with that. But it is, it is, they make it as accessible as they can for people to go and have this amazing experience. And you do have to sort of earn it and, and work for it. I think that's incredibly important. I love what the baseball team has done this year. They have taken upon themselves to go above and beyond to, to raising, having that spirit of, of, of sort of entrepreneurship. And we're, I think that's what Crafters Edge is all about. I think that's a great experience. And they get something super fun that's outside of the curriculum base as a reward for that work. And so I think that's, they are, I think some of it's lost when they're selling plastic knickknacks that nobody really wants. They just want to support their school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen. Okay, I'm still making pony. So I wanted to circle back around to earlier and also touch on some things Adrian said. The Pi organization is, yes, in its infancy. I've actually been helping the treasurer write the financial policies for it. So I was aware, and this fundraiser that has ruffles and feathers actually existed before Pi started meeting. So that's why there's maybe a disconnect between parents groups and the Pi organization because unfortunately we signed a contract before we had any meetings. I have a member with me, our treasurer from yesterday's parents group meeting. If you want to see what we've been funding, I can say that I know the Montreal trip ran sixty grand-ish. Boston was like eighteen. It was a hundred and eighty-two per student for like ninety-nine students. And but those would be good to consider in terms of school budget related things. The things we fund are more piecemeal, like microphone rental for a dinner theater. And the, you know, the orchestra teacher wanted to take her students to see Black Violin at the Barry Hour House. So we funded things like that to a total of forty-two hundred in parent or teacher requests and another eight hundred in, you know, support staff gifts and paying speakers and. But yeah, so I agree that it would be really helpful to have something in the budget. I think that the motivation of the parents group with the big fundraiser that we have going on was so that these parents who are looking at the six hundred dollar bill for Montreal might be looking at a three hundred dollar bill instead. Like if we could knock it out of the park, it would make everybody's life a little easier. I have three MSMSRs and, you know, I've been paying for Boston and I paid for Boston for two last year. And it's just, you know, part of parenting. And I think that we want to take the edge off for parents so that it's not what they have to worry about. You know, kids, everybody benefits from the trips and we all just want what's best for our students. I'm going to give you guys a copy of this if you want something to recap. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you email it to us?
I can't email. I'll email it to you.
Hi everybody.
Hi.
I'm Jill Remick. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Union Elementary School. And I didn't plan on being here and I had a few people who asked me to come because I had a very emotional evening last night that I wanted to share with you folks. When I was on the parents group at Union Elementary years ago, we made a very purposeful decision to stop doing Genevieve as a fundraiser even though it made, which was the black coffee, baby butter chocolates, things like that. Because even though it was by far the biggest fundraiser and it was something that could sort of be counted on to fund some of these really important things. And we knew at that time that we were going to have to find another way to find that money. And so we put on our thinking caps and one of the things that came out of it was the Fall Festival that's happening in a couple of weeks. And Adrian, it was her brainchild and it's, she said, I can't believe we're here in this beautiful state and we don't have a Fall Festival for Montreal kids. And it's something that all the kids can participate in. They can do fundraising for it. My daughter's going to sell earrings in one of the little vending things. And the other thing that came out was the lip sync battle, which is frankly, if I die tomorrow, it will be my lasting favorite. So I was really upset when my daughter came home yesterday and said, and slapped this package on our table and said, mommy, I have to go out. I have to sell these cards and I have to, I have to hand it to people and then they'll feel that and they'll feel like they have to buy it. So then they, they won't want to hand it back, so they'll buy it. And it's $20 apiece. And I was like, wait, wait, who, what? Because it didn't sound like what MRPS Pi was working on. It didn't sound like the Boston trip. It, it just sort of came out of nowhere. And then, and she said that they had a school-wide assembly to learn about how to do that. And again, my reaction is really emotional to this because I feel like anytime we put kids in a position where they feel like they have to come up with the money, that means their parents have to come up with the money. And I grew up in St. Johnsbury, which is rural and poor. And I remember dreading the Scholastic Book Fair because it was like this wealth of things that we would never be able to have. And I was really glad when I worked at Union, I worked at the book fair, that there was a method that the teachers could help and the parents could help. And we could make sure everything parents group put money in so kids who couldn't, who didn't have money could buy books. So I don't think we really understand the message that kids get when they're asked to do that kind of fundraising. I think there's different kinds of fundraising that can be really positive and involved, that involve some sort of community event. And then there's fundraising like what Natalie came home with, which to me, obviously it's really raw. And so therefore, obviously, if me at her age found it really raw. Because if I was to get like the thing that I got last year for Boston that said, you can either fundraise or you can pay installments or you can pay, but either way, this is what it's going to cost to do Boston. And asking a kid to fundraise means either asking their parents to fundraise or asking the kids to go out. So I'm all about fundraising. My daughter worked at the 50/50 Raffle several times in Mountaineers games to raise money for those softball jerseys. Like I get that. But it just felt like such an unhealthy delivery of the message to her. And I don't think we really understand, I'm so glad you folks were talking about equity, because even $50 is a lot for some people and can be prohibitive. And there were definitely kids in Natalie's class who didn't get to go on the fifth grade field trip and I kind of wondered why. So I really appreciate that you're talking about equity and about ensuring that things that are valuable, like Boston, which frankly, I think she knows more about that spirit of history than I do because of that trip, are part of the curriculum. And then we can talk about other ways to fundraise, but those are, I think, the big things I wanted to say. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Oh, and I wanted to apologize to Lanay for the fact that I posted this on Facebook last night. And she had to deftly and professionally and calmly deflect a lot of other, not necessarily helpful commentary that came out of my post about that. Can I respond? Like a quick third second or? Okay. Should I come up?
Yeah.
Okay. So many thanks to Jill. I actually messaged her back and thanked everyone who kind of, you know, came and put some thought into it and then realized that emotions got the best of a lot of people last night. What I wanted to say and it maybe will explain where I was coming from. I was literally a one-person parents group as of three weeks ago. I was the president. There were no other officers. I put out a plea on Frontboard Forum for a treasurer and a secretary. And I got both, but now we're a three-person parents group. So we signed this agreement back when Leslie was our faithful president and it was up to me to execute the entire thing alone at the start of school. So I, I have a lot of respect for the Fall Festival and the huge group of parents that put the time into coordinating it. But I was just one person and you know, I am doing the best I can to support our kids. But you know, people have to get out there and they have to show up at the meetings. People were posting about not knowing this was going on or how come we chose this? We talked about it for months in our meetings. It was always on the agenda. People just have to show up. We love everyone's opinion, but when we're alone, we can only do our best, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Our audience has done a great job of serving the school, so we appreciate the time.
There's still Mark.
Yeah, I know. Just responding to Lanay.
Hi Jennifer.
Hi Jen.
I commented a lot. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
I'm very volunteer for your parents group down in Montreal.
Good to have you.
So just a couple of thoughts. I am a girl in the fifth grader, so I was working volunteering at elementary school until this year. Very much a supporter of fundraising, very much a supporter of all these field trips. I went to Virgin's Elementary School, Virgin's Union High School. I spent a lot of time fundraising, doing community events way back in the 1980s. And I got to do a lot of things, including an amazing trip to Montreal and a trip to Boston. I also was a part of a very small trip to Germany that I spent the entire summer working to raise the money for. So I'm pretty familiar with, you know, what it means to a young person to, to raise that money. When my concern came up was again, you know, much in the same way of parents' story, when my kid came home last night in the third day of school and lapping plastic cards with McDonald's and Burger King all over it, I was pretty stunned that that was the first experience he was having in fundraising at Main Street Middle School. One of our previous experiences had been these wonderful things like the lip sync battle and the Fall Festival and popcorn movie nights and the Scholastic Book Fair, which I agree again, like so pleased that there are ways that all kids can participate in, in the book fair. I'm not sure that that was true when I was a young person. I think you had to have money to go. So I asked a bunch of questions of Pam. She was the first person that I knew to, to ask. And then when I woke up in the morning and there was a thread with a hundred comments, I thought, oh, well, maybe I should ask here too. So I just posted my questions again. And then the questions are really, you know, why are we contracting with a for-profit group to do this fundraiser? Why are we asking our kids to sell these corporate branded cards for $20 that most people aren't going to use? Why are we doing due diligence around whether or not this company actually does what it says it does? How much of the money that a $20 card costs is actually going to go to support the trip to Boston or support the trip to Montreal? And when I turn to Facebook, it's not much. My benefit is for a really long time. And if I went to my daughter and said, please give me 20 bucks, half of it's going to support the work that I do and the other half is going to go to a for-profit company? That would be pretty, pretty hard sell. But I believe in transparency and I believe in telling people what they're actually giving towards. And I can't feel good about sending my kid out with the plastic cards to our neighbors, our friends and family and say, please give us 20 bucks. 10 bucks is going to go to the cause. I would rather take a letter out and say, we want to support an equitable trip to Boston and an equitable trip, equitable trip to Montreal. Can you give us 20 dollars, 10 dollars, 50 dollars? And every single dollar will go towards supporting that trip. I would much rather do that. And I will put some energy into that kind of fundraising. But I can't get behind a corporate for-profit model that takes half the money. Especially when there are kids that don't have resources and they're being pressured into going out and trying to sell these cards. And half the money isn't going away. It's going out of our community. So that was my feeling. But happy volunteer, now that I'm a middle school president, I'll be with you.
Christopher, I just want to say one thing about, I agree with most of what you said. I worry when parents get their information from Friends of Montreal Facebook page. And you made the statement that I learned from Facebook. And I don't want to speak for you today, but I've grown in the position where misinformation is on Friends of Montreal Facebook page.
Out.
So I just.
It's really hard to answer all the questions.
Yeah, it really is. So going to Pam, going to Lanay in this instance, coming to me, those are, those are much better sources of information than, than a thread, especially if it's an angry one.
I say I learned from Facebook, but I really learned that from Lanay. She posted that on the Facebook page. And I, you know, absolutely agree that it's not the best way to meet somebody. It's a pretty terrible way to meet. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
So hi, I'm here and I was the one posting some vitriol last night because I was spitting nails when my daughter came home and said, huh, I need to sell this stuff to raise money to go to Montreal. And I was like, well, what's this stuff? And I looked it over and I saw a lot of corporate corporations and a few little places. Yeah, I looked at Facebook and I had a parent's question, what's going on with this? So I looked at the data and I see NS, NS, NSPIJ, so imagine that's the parents group. If this is, who's doing the fundraising? Who are these people? And so my quick look over, see the company out of Washington State. And looking further into it, I see that for every one card that goes, one card is profit for that Washington State company. And I'm like, my daughter says, you don't have to do this. You're not required to do this. It just says, well, we have to raise money because the school had the bathrooms and got some equipment. They don't stop. That's our taxes pay for that. That's our pay. That's done. So I don't know where she got that idea, but talking with her friends, she was like, we have to do this. I'm like, no, you don't have to do this. So I'm like, the third grader can sit down here tonight and say that the third grader came home last night saying they had to do this. There's a problem, one. Another problem happened with this though is if this is part of the parents group and it's part of a nonprofit organization, then paperwork should reflect the full name of that nonprofit organization. And this paperwork does not have that information. The third thing is that if you have a fundraiser and you have a non-profit involved, you have to have consent. If it divided two parties into Boy Scouts of America, you know, founding of this community here. And every family we have through Scouts must have parental consent signed. The same thing happens every year when we have the scheme at Union Elementary where the kids go and run for prizes. And they solicit funds for as a fundraiser. That form also has parental consent. This stuff didn't have it. So that's what I was spitting nails last night. And you guys got it back because I'm not taking it. My daughter's not going to do it. And I'm really sorry. Love for the Main Street Middle School as well as Montreal schools. But we're smarter than this. And I'm all for creating this, earning money, also money in for our communities. This is actually our own money going back out. And that's why I've gotten so upset about it. So thank you for your time.
I got home yesterday.
Can you tell us your...
Oh, busy.
Busy what?
When I got home yesterday, I put, I gave these cards to my mom and I'm like, we have to sell these. And she's like, what? These have nothing to do with the Fall Festival. I'm like, well, we could get like these prizes. And like, everybody wanted the prizes because they sound cool, but cool. Then I realized there was not a lot of local things on here. There's a whole bunch of fast food. There's Langdon Street and China Star, which are like the only local things. And we don't really go to China Star because we can't really eat Chinese food. And my mom said I wasn't allowed to do it. Then she went on Facebook, she posted a whole bunch of things. And.
Tell your mom to call me next time, okay?
Yeah.
That's great. I mean, this is a very solvable problem today. Okay. Yeah, I think a lot of it stems from the lack of policy guidance. I think it's clear that we want to support robust, lean opportunities like the Boston trip. We do want to do it in a way that's equitable, that doesn't leave families or children behind or in a bad situation. And I'm of the consensus that fundraising property has a valuable role. We just need to put some guidelines around what property is.
Right. And it sounds like there's already a lot of thought that has been spent on that and a lot of people are really interested in that topic.
So are we sending something to the policy committee?
I think we should send it to the policy committee and. Can I add one thing real quick? Yes. I think one of the major issues that a lot of parents had with it was the training that went along with it. See, can you speak up? The training happened at the all-school assembly where our children were required to repeat phrases to then tell to people as they were trying to sell these things? It's, it's one thing to be, to say you have an opportunity to sell these if you'd like to, but to be training our children as force-feeding salespeople is something that we need to consider as part of that policy.
That's what I was just about to say is there are some things going on here that are very separate from what we began this conversation with. It seems like we could probably, the policy committee could probably establish some general guidelines in the interim until we have the data to make decisions about, do we want to pay as, as a taxpayer base for all field trips or what extent to which we want to pay for them? That would provide really helpful guidance, I think.
Actually, that's an easier piece to run. And then start running and some other steps.
Do we, so the current fundraiser that's underway right now that people are not happy with is generally speaking, not our business. Do we want to engage with that at all or do we want to leave it to Vivy to work out, clarify what's going on with that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think there's definitely a lot of, I think, stuff swirling around in the community in terms of whether kids are being told they have to do it or sports teams are being told they have to do it and whether the school should be clarifying that, I think.
I mean, this is definitely management territory because we want to, right?
Right. Committee territory.
And sticking with the get out of, since we're in the middle of now. And sticking with the get out of, since we're in the middle of now, it's actually really...
Are you able to comment?
Sorry. I was, I was, I was trying to shed a little light on things. I don't think it matters. I don't think it matters.
Are we sure of them?
Yes. We just have to decide who would decide.
I, okay.
And it's perception at this point rather than, like, it doesn't really matter what happened. It's more that we need to make sure people understand what's going to happen.
I think what happened matters, though. I'm still unclear on if kids were told, "You have to do this thing" or "You don't have to do this thing."
But Lynette can speak to it.
Yeah.
I'll be there. Nobody wants to be here all night. My kids think it's great because it's about bedtime time. So, I was there. I actually introduced the fundraiser, that he was there to speak to kids. I told the kids a really quick short about what we fund. You know, your photo booth for the school dance, you know, you pitch in on your field trips. This is what we are trying to help raise money for so that we can fund all these things for you this year. Bob came up. In terms of things they had to say, the only thing he really pressed was, "Make sure you thank people for their time. They won't remember what you were selling them, but they'll remember the way you treated them." That's what he pressed. So, the, "You have to sell it," the, "You're going to be in trouble if you come back without them," the, "You'll be financially responsible if you lose them," all of that came out of nothingness. We are all baffled as to where that came from. Like, middle school kids talking to middle school kids, I would guess. I had teachers come up to me afterwards who were like, "That was really good. Like, he was a good speaker. The kids were really like solid." And like, none of us were, you know, shocked and awed, horrified at what he had said. I was equally surprised to see the comments about kids feeling like they had to do something that was never conveyed to them. He said, you know, he did, he did express that, or Pam did express that, you know, "This is the only fundraiser we're going to hand you this year, the only one. We'd really love for you guys to support your school community because the parents group can't fund your things if they don't have funds to fund them." But the force that's being expressed behind things just didn't exist. I called Pam, I emailed Pam this morning and was like, "About it all," because I, we both were there and we couldn't figure it out. So, that's what happened.
Perception. I think I still remain concerned that there's a perception, there are mistaken perceptions of that. It needs to be addressed, both with the athletic teams. And I know personally that some of the athletes on the high school athletic teams got a particular message, which I think is not necessarily the district's message, and I think that that message is out there. So, I agree, it's not management territory, but I do think it's important.
Well, I think, where did the government, VIVI, to figure out how that exists? How, 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 how?
There's another need about the clarifying the expectations. I did get a comment from a parent that their high school athlete would be given additional workouts if they didn't sell it.
That was addressed. That was addressed by our director. Yeah.
That's been covered. So, that's been taken care of, but the middle school parents' understanding of how the fundraiser works seems murky. So, a clarifying statement to middle school parents about, you know, addressing the fact that it's not a...
And the students, I think, this is the address we need to maybe come up with.
I'm happy to. I tried to kind of spread the news and answer all the questions last night.
But it needs to cover, you know, 100% of the parents.
Some people, we do, we need to get it out, absolutely. But I worry about, I think that's not a problem. We can use our swift, yes, to do that. But I worry about, there is, in several instances, not just this one, there is a misunderstanding a lot of times about what is district and what is not. And this was, this particular one was not district, right? It was a school assembly.
Yeah.
I think once again, but it's a first time.
It was asked to be a group, so I don't think it's a stretch to ask that if we crafted something clarifying to everyone that she would be willing to send out on the house.
Right. And Pam can be very clear as to the fact that it's a parents' group fundraiser, but here are parameters of this parents' group fundraiser.
I did email Pam as soon as Natalie came home. I haven't heard from her yet. I just wanted to address the perception because it's all about the context. So, you call all the kids together in the school-wide assembly, there is an understanding there that the school community has entrusted this person to talk to our children. And if you're telling a fifth and sixth and seventh grader all these wonderful things that they experience and know about and that this thing is related to that and that you may as well have told them, so, very strong message to send.
I, I heard it was a good...
Very compliant, good kids, too. Please.
Yeah. I think it's clear, yeah, there were good intentions, the hotel paid the benefits. This is clearly my experience. Yeah, this is, I think the lack of clear guidance on how this school interacts with fundraising was here. We called the assembly, you know, the parent group, nonprofit organization, the fact that, you know, there's a reason this town does not have the mechanics, we don't love this type of business, we don't support them. You know, if this, I think, was a locally grown thing that was done with the partners that had guidance, you know, were supporting the businesses we know about downtown, Apple Station, etc., you know, I think there would be a different reaction to it. And I think if Pam and others and, you know, parents groups could lead a policy that said, "Okay, for a good fundraiser, here's, here's the, here's the budget we want to stay on," it would, it would make it, it would avoid this type of incident happening and...
I think, I think we need to be careful with that, though. I mean, I understand that in Montpelier, we all feel our community values strongly, but it sounds like the parents' group, which is down to three billion resources, really has been searching for an effective fundraiser and that this has raised money elsewhere. I don't really understand how it's raised money because I don't, like, I downloaded the app and tried to go through the process and I don't see how it's going to raise money. But apparently, it has raised money really well elsewhere. So, I think that they worked hard to find something that would work and we don't want to so constrain them that they can't effectively raise money.
The constraints also are the greatest breeding ground of creativity, right?
Well, I was just, I mean, Leslie and I once did a non-scholastic book fair in the middle school, partnering with a local bookstore, which was a lot of fun and a lot of work and I think made...
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars, yeah.
Same with that. We did a local, an alternative to scholastic book fair at the elementary school, two years, and there was a disaster.
I also made the statement, it's just, it's really bothering me, so I feel like I, and I could get an act for this and I recognize it, that there are families who don't have the same value around stores like McDonald's, that go to McDonald's because that's the store they can afford on a, on a night when they need to have a cheap, easy meal. And so, the comments, the comments about the bigger box stores or things that Montpelier doesn't value, there are families in Montpelier I know who do value those types of opportunities for their family and see it as a night out. So, I wanted to watch our, just as we're thinking about equity in our lenses, that we all come with a very big level of privilege around this table and we have to, we have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, but even using my privileged spending resources on the app, I was not generating much revenue for...
For Montpelier public, for Montpelier sports.
Yes. I would rather just write a $50 check to the parents' group and not get a coupon.
We love one. We did sign, we did look into the coupon books of past years that we had used that were local after they failed miserably last two years ago. We had pre-bought them all and ended up with, we probably could have built things out of extra coupons. So, it was a net loss. And we surveyed parents and said, "What can we do differently?" You know, and they said, "It's reusable, it was not a coupon book." The app with the coupon book had been a disaster and had, had parents, what was it, like, renew their membership and they assumed the money would go back to the school, but in fact, that wasn't the case. And so, we did look for something outside and schools surrounding us had used this fundraiser with this specific person and with great success.
I was just going to say, it must be the area because at my door, I was a year thirty-two player trying to sell me a hat.
Yes.
I had one for my transfer as well last year.
We certainly did try to keep it as local as possible and this is the avenue we ended up at, so.
But it sounds like, I'm going to check where the parents groups come up with guardrails that makes sense.
Yeah, right.
And knowing we're independent, we're going to do something committed like this.
We'll be controlled, we'll serve our users.
We did, we need to, for the purpose of the policy committee with doing this, probably.
Might as well. I don't think we actually disagree with that at this point.
A motion for the policy committee to draft a policy around fundraising.
I'll make that one.
And do we want to, we probably don't even want to specify right now about like budgetary type, equitability type issues. We're just...
Well, let's have something we can react to.
Yeah.
Well, will the fundraising policy, it doesn't seem like the fundraising policy is the right place to address this question of how field trips connect with curriculum and are accessible to everybody. That seems like a different conversation.
It's a really important conversation, but it's definitely a different conversation. And that may be addressed in...
It's a budget conversation.
Curriculum, budget and the equity policy.
I was going to say, the equity policy might be a good spot for that.
Can the policy committee, I know we have a motion, but just before I vote on that motion, I just want to understand what that includes. So, if it doesn't include that, can we charge them with another task? The policy committee, if anybody really wants to know who the heroes in town are, can we charge them with finding where in our existing policy we address the connection between field trips, curriculum and equity?
I'm really interested in that question, so I'm happy to.
I don't know if it's a policy committee.
Ryan and I tried today and couldn't find any thing that fit like...
Figure out how to make it happen.
Okay.
I don't know if we need a separate motion, maybe just a more general motion to address the conversation that was before the board tonight.
Yeah, I think about it more, the curriculum piece, it's the board's purview under educational quality standards to approve our curriculum. I mean, it's your curriculum, right? So, I mean, typically, that's where, that's where this entity fits into that discussion, I think. It's stated very clearly in the educational policy, or educational quality standards.
So, the curriculum, the curriculum itself should speak to field trips and equity?
No. The, what the board's purview would be under EQS is to approve the district's curriculum. So, something like a field trip is, would have to have a tied connection to what you've approved the fourth grade curriculum to be based on the standards that are guiding that work.
Great.
But you can connect it very easily that way.
So, how does that come up for discussion?
I don't know. Good question.
Okay, we could think about that.
Yeah, the policy, yeah. These are two different things, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm fine. I just don't, one is a little bit...
All of our field trips and we should create an action item so that this doesn't just linger out there for the next several months.
Are there filing field trips or what are our field trips trying to... And actually, that was the data that somebody else said they would help us with.
I don't think that's what she was saying. She was, she was talking about fundraising data.
Oh, and you're saying, since there are no field trips in our budget, as far as I know, right now, everything they fundraise for would be...
There is a line, right? In our budget.
Where are all our field trips? What are we paying for right now? What are we not paying for right now?
Yeah, I, I have absolutely no...
You're right, you know, what are educational goals?
Right.
And they do this...
So, our principals were going to get all of you to your field trips.
Do you want to issue a term of reimbursement so we can...
Actually, I know that before the budgeting process, we have to...
Yeah. Okay. Quick. Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't need to get this ironed out for this year's budget. We're still working on the curriculum, right? So, this could be a longer-term question, I think, especially if we want to do it well and not just throw people into mayhem.
Well, not just say we're going to fund Montreal and Boston because that's what the trips have always been.
Right, right. You know, if teachers are, teachers, I'm sure, are putting pieces in place for this year's Boston and Montreal trips. So, let's answer this question with an object next year.
And that's true. So, the next year's, there are marches for next year.
Of course it is.
I mean, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of field trips, there's so much they cost. Here's other kind of funding. You know, we might not take action on it, but I think giving that information now, I don't think that's a, I think that's a reasonable way.
So, maybe we could ask what information they already have.
Maybe we can ask the finance committee to do that task.
Sure. I mean, we don't just have to go to the same people to get the information.
Yeah.
We're going to have to say that we'll have to go to the principals and Grant.
Grant might have that information.
Yeah, but we could do that. Okay.
VIVI had a good question, though, because sometimes a field trip is like, you know, union elementary school kids walk over to the high school to plant lettuce seeds.
Yeah.
Or kids go to Lost Nation Theater show.
I'd say only if it costs money.
So, field trips that cost money.
Okay.
And not often happen every year, like the Black Island, it's one of the great times.
But I do think there's a place for, these are the major field trips that we do every year because they're related to the curriculum and we find them very valuable for that reason. And then there's, I would hope, a small fund somewhere, whether it's the PTA or the school board or something, that says, "This is set aside for spontaneous things of the moment." And I'm sorry, but you have to stay within those limits. So, if there's seven spontaneous things this year, you will only be able to do two.
Yeah, I mean, I think everywhere in Hubbard Park does not need to be accounted for, but the Boston, the Montreal, the six, etc. I think getting a profile of what that information looks like would be informative.
And so, we've divided this, since I'm on one of those committees, I want to be clear what, hell, there's no sense for that, what's going to be committee assignment or if it's really just something.
It's just the task me to do it.
All right, thanks. Thanks.
Thanks.
What is the, the, the policy charged to...
What is the greater policy in charge to...
Develop a fundraising policy.
Fundraising policy. Yeah. Okay.
That talks about fundraising, not about field trips or curriculum.
Yeah.
Do you want to make that motion again? Just...
It was made, it's seconded.
Yeah, seconded, that's right.
Yeah. Okay.
It was.
Okay.